Okay. Good evening. I'd like to welcome Pastor Jerry Dockery from Crab Apple First Baptist Church who will lead us in our invocation.
Shall we pray? Our Father, we pause at this time to give thanks to you for all the many blessings, the countless blessings that we have. In particular, Lord, for this place in which we live and work and play. We ask that, Lord, as leadership convenes here tonight, that you would give direction and wisdom, that you might continue to bless this community, and, Lord, that you might use this community in profound ways to impact other communities. We thank you for all of those that serve, particularly those that serve as our first responders. We pray for their protection and health and for their families as well. We just give ourselves to you and ask and invite your presence during these proceedings tonight in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to call the regular city, the regular meeting of the City of Milton Council for Monday, August 19th, 2019, to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're happy to call a roll and make general announcements. For the August 19th, 2019, regular meeting, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk or me prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you're representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Protem Peyton Jameson?
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coons?
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley?
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookley?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick?
Here.
For the record, Mayor Joe Lockwood is absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and sovereign.
Will the city clerk, city clerk, please sound the next item?
Next item is approval of agenda meeting, Agenda Item Number 19-173.
Thank you. I would like to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition to the agenda. If y'all could have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of an executive session.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. The next item is general public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor pro tem and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember that this is not a time to engage the mayor pro tem or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. Do we have any general public comment?
We do have one general public comment. It is from Ed J. Edstrom, Eric J. Edstrom, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Eric, E-R-I-C, J. Edstrom, E-D-S-T-R-O-M. Excuse me. My address is 120 Stone Orchard Court, Milton, 30004. The reason for my comment this evening is really from the prior meetings, council meetings session. And two things came to mind to me as I listened because unfortunately I was not able to attend physically in person and watched it on, on live feed actually. So, and unable to comment. The first item that I'd like to speak to briefly is there was an opinion that was offered from counsel, meaning legal counsel, not necessarily, but it was addressed to the council with respect to the 2017, 2018 computation of taxes against the millage rate. And what I found most disturbing about that is, is two things. One is that ultimately, while it may be a nominal amount to some on the council or others in the audience and the citizens of our fair city, the reality is it's our money. And I was a little heartbroken and a little concerned with respect to the treatment of those funds, whether it was again, an overpayment or an underpayment. Obviously, if it was underpaid, not much you can do about it. But two things strike me. If it was an overage payment, even if it was a penny or a dollar, it belongs back to the citizens. And I think as taxing as it may be allegedly to staff in order to recalibrate that under an overage payment, I think it's worthy, from a transparency perspective, for at least the citizens to be aware of that action and also to be aware of what, how was the calculation derived? I'm in finance business. It's what I do for a living. And if I'm making one penny of an error in a client account, I have to report that. I think the same is due to we, the citizens, who pay the taxes in this fair community in addition to the council members. So that's one observation I would like to make. Second observation I would like to make with respect to that is there was a comment, I don't recall unfortunately, who made the comment, so I apologize for that. I should have written it down, but I did not. But one of the council members or the mayor himself made mention to the effect that, well, we really like the transparency in the process. And to me, that doesn't really demonstrate transparency in terms of the factors that I just laid out. And the third piece of that I would like to add there is that oftentimes is if there is a miscalculation on a tax basis that we as taxpayers are supposed to pay either under or over, and if there was an error, that's fine, was there fraud? Let's go through that examination of that process. Again, in my business, our auditors would be involved, my chief compliance officer would be involved, and we would have to, in theory, send out a letter to clients explaining what the circumstances were and prove that calculation now to be pure and accurate going forward in the future so a secondary or an additional mistake like that would never be, would never occur again. So just a couple of observations. Then the second agenda item that I have to remain under my five minutes is really just about the millage vote itself. And I'm not going to rehash everything we went through. We had a process that we all followed. Some people showed up. I did on July 22nd at the second evening meeting and made my fair statement at that particular time. But really what my challenge is, is that I go back to the 17, 18 millage under an overage, how proud the council members and mayor were about how transparent that process was. But then to take back, and I understand the debate and necessarily the commentary, perhaps that should be contained behind an executive session, but certainly the vote should have been for the public to witness and demonstrate rather than us to hear it through secondhand, primarily through Councilman Matt Coons and his post on the, I think it's Nextdoor app is where I saw that reference. So with that, I leave you with my comments. I hope in the future that any and all votes are done in public along with your commentary so we as the citizens and the taxpayers of this community have full quote transparency, which apparently this council really strives for. And I think in the past, you've done a nice job with that. But in this particular instance, I think you let the citizens down. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, will the city clerk sound the items?
First item for consent agenda is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and EcoFlow Incorporated for EcoFlow to conduct the City of Milton's Household Paint and Chemicals Collections Event. This is agenda item number 19-174. Our next item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Brumbler Rees &amp; Associates Incorporated regarding surveying services and construction drawings for Providence Park Trails, Agenda Item Number 19-175. The third item is approval of an agreement between, between the City of Milton and International Database doing business as BidNet for a contract management database, Agenda Item Number 19-176. Our fourth item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Wilberton &amp; Associates Incorporated for emergency preemption traffic signal for State Route 9 Public Safety Complex, Agenda Item Number 19-177. Our fifth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of the following subdivision plats. Number one, James Rosenberg Lots 877, 878, 923, and 924. This is at 13520, 13555, and 13560 Black Marrow Lane. It's a minor plat for lot reconfiguration on three lots. The total acreage is 20.893 acres at a density of .14 lots per acre. The second one is Nick's Crossing Land Lots 452 and 485 at 910 Nick's Road. This is a minor plaque creating three lots, total acreage of 5.14 acres, and there is a density of .58 lots per acre. This is agenda item number 19-178.
All right. Is there a motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I make motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Moving on to reports and presentations, will the city clerk please sound the first item?
The first item is proclamation recognizing 2019 girls 18 and under and boys 12 and under Summer USTA Junior Team Tennis City Championships, Champions Day. Councilmember Laura Bentley.
All right. Who's out there that's a city champion? Raise your hand. All right. Well, welcome to City Hall. We're here tonight to celebrate your success. We're very proud of you. We know that the courts over there at the Milton Country Club have, have, are in need of some repair and we're working on that here tonight. We're excited to have you here to read a proclamation by the mayor pro tem and then we'll take some pictures. So welcome to City Hall.
Thanks, Councilmember Bentley. On behalf of the mayor, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas the United States Tennis Association is a national governing body for the sport of tennis and a recognized leader in promoting and developing the sports growth on every level in the United States with over 700,000 members. And whereas both the girls 18U team and the boys 12U team play in the Atlanta USTA Junior Team Tennis Association in the Georgia Southern section. And whereas the girls 18U USTA Summer Team, which has been playing together for 10 years and is captained and coached by Mr. Terry O'Brien. And whereas the team captured the Summer USTA Division Title and swept the playoffs without losing a match to win the USTA City Championship. And whereas the boys 12U USTA Summer Team, which has been playing together for two years and is captained by Ms. Charlotte Scanlon and coached by Mr. Terry O'Brien. And whereas the boys 12U team recorded an 82% games, won over games, lost win ratio on their way to capturing the Southern USTA Division Title and swept through the playoffs to win the USTA City Championship. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton hereby dictate and proclaim Monday, August 19th, as 2019 girls 18U Summer USTA Junior Team Tennis and 2019 boys 12U Summer USTA Junior Team Tennis City Champions Day in the City of Milton, Georgia. So right now, if y'all could come on up and we'll take some pictures and...
There's another one.
There's another one? Are you going to do both of them right now?
So it looks like we have two teams, right? So let's do one team and then do the second team. Does that work? Perfect. So ladies on the front, if you'll spread out just a little bit from each other. Perfect, perfect. And then council's going to slide in behind you. Yes, that's perfect. You're going to shift just a little, you're going to be between, if you will, councilman scoot over a little bit, Terry. Perfect. Ladies, if you have your proclamation, you're going to hold it with a seal at the bottom. We get a seal and then just hold it down so it doesn't show your face. Perfect. And we're all looking right here. We're going to do it a couple. One, two, three. Let's do that again. One, two, three, smile. Stay where you are. One more. All right. We're looking right here. One, two, three, smile. Perfect. Now I'm going to swat. Thank you. You're going to stand right in front of them. They will not bite, I promise. If the entire group, front and back row, will take a half a step this way. On that way. Perfect. You're going to scoot just a little. Young man in the teal, come over a little bit more, a little bit more. Perfect. All right. We're all looking right here again. Okay. Seal up, your seal, make sure your seal at the bottom. Perfect. And just hold it down so it doesn't obstruct your handsome face. Perfect. All right. We're looking right here. Okay, don't, you may see parents or family on the side. Look at me, okay? One, two, three. Let's do that again. One, two, three. Stay where you are, please. We did it. Yay. Great. Super.
Just starting to get it started. And the next proclamation is for the 2019 mixed winter double, sorry, A4 team, which we would like to also celebrate with a proclamation. And I just have one more comment. The common denominator in all these champions here tonight is Terry O'Brien, who is the tennis, our awesome tennis professional over there at the Milton Country Club. And I know that we're proud of him and y'all are too, and we really appreciate all that he does for the teams and also the facility. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mayor Protem Jameson.
All right. Thank you. I will read this proclamation on behalf of the mayor. Whereas the Atlanta Lawn Tennis Association is an internationally recognized organization supporting 80,000 members who play recreational tennis throughout the metro Atlanta area. And whereas the mixed A team has been playing together for four seasons at Milton Tennis Center. And whereas, after making the playoffs the previous two seasons, the 2019 A4 winner mixed team went on to win the division title and the city championship. And whereas, the team captained by Ms. Deborah Dean and Mr. Jerry Say won the city championship coming down to the final line tied 2 to 2 in matches before pulling out the last line to win the Alta Mix City Title. And whereas, the team will be moving up to A1 in the 2020 Winter Alta Season. And whereas, this title represents the Milton Tennis Center's 128th Alta USTA Division Title and the 42nd Alta USTA City Championship. And this is the fourth division title and the fourth city championship for the City of Milton, Milton since 2018. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton hereby dictate and proclaim Monday, August 19th, as 2019 mixed winner A4 Milton Tennis Center Atlanta Lawn Tennis Association Alta City Champions Day in the City of Milton, Georgia.
Good job. So I think we, we can all fit on the wall. Council, if you'll just sort of part in the middle and we'll insert them right. Perfect. If you'll turn your proclamation with a seal at the bottom. Perfect. Excellent. Everybody will take about a half a step this way. Perfect. All right. We're looking right here. One, two, three, smile. Let's do that again. One, two, three. If you would, stay where you are. Oh, one, one more. Sorry. I'm not, it's not your fault. It's mine. Got movement in the background. Here we go. We want one, two, three, smile. Perfect. Great. Fabulous. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to first presentation, will the city clerk please sound that item?
First item under first presentation is consideration of in ordnance to adopt regulations of small wireless facilities and antennas in the public right of way for the City of Milton, Georgia. This is agenda item number 19-179.
Mayor Protem, I recommend that we make a motion to pass the first presentation as read.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the first presentation. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. We have no items under our public hearing, the zoning agenda, or unfinished business. Moving on to new business, will the city clerk, city clerk, please sound that item?
Item is consideration of a resolution to accept the plan for the park at the former Milton Country Club, Agenda Item Number 19-180, Mr. Parag Agrawal.
Hi, I'm Parag Agrawal, City's Community Development Director. And today I am here to present you the resolution to accept the master plan of the former Milton Country Club property. Today I also have with me Michelle McIntosh Ross, who is the principal planner in our department and has served as the project manager of this very important project, and Charlene Menges from Kimley Horn. Kimley Horn has been the lead consultant of this project. So this is who we are. Starting with a very brief timeline of this master planning project, the city acquired the former Milton Country Club around 18 months, 18 months back in January of 2018. The master plan of this project started early summers of 2018, in May 2018. The city held a number of community meetings in October of last year, and we got a lot of input from the Milton residents. We came in front of the city council in February. We got very good feedback from the city council members. We again came back in front of the city council in July. We incorporated all the feedback which we received in February work session. We gave you the presentation in July of 2019. And today we are again in front of you to present you the draft master plan, and we will talk to you about the feedback which we received from the city council members last month. So the project updates for today. When we came in front of the city council last month, we got some very good feedback, and we have incorporated all that feedback into the presentation today. Now, one of the questions that was raised by the city council members was like, if the city decides to move forward, whether adding the inclusive playground donated by children's charity, do we have enough space? So that's one of the questions which we will be answering today. Since last month, we have met with the swim and tennis teams that, that are part of the Milton Country Club, and we have received their feedback, and we would like to talk to you about their feedback today. And as you know, the city budget process is ongoing. Last month, we also got the feedback from the city council members, they wanted to know, how much funding do we have in the city budget? And now we have a much better idea how much funding is available for this very important project. So these are the two site plans. The site plan on the right is from July 2019, that was presented to you last month. And the, and the site plan towards the left is the, is the site plan which we have revised based, based on the feedback of the city council members. So I will just show you the changes. As you can see, the playground in July, there was a playground next to the tennis courts. When we met with the tennis team, what we heard, they do not want to have a playground just next to the tennis courts because it's very noisy. So we have revised the location of this tennis court. The playground over here, it basically shows the inclusive playground that is donated by children's charity. If the city council members decides, we do have enough space to install a playground, the plan is not recommending that we should install this inclusive playground donated by children's charity. When we held our community meetings in October, some city, some community members raised concerns because of traffic, because of parking issues. And we are also looking at some other locations where this inclusive playground can go. So again, we do have enough space if the city council members decides to have this inclusive playground over here. But again, we are not saying it has to go in here. We do have other options available to us, which we can discuss with you at a later stage. The other change which you can see is the location of this volleyball court. So once we have basically placed this playground over here, we have moved the volleyball court more towards the pool area. One of the concerns that was raised by the swim team was the location of this volleyball court near to this pool. And again, this area can be used for the assembly for the swim teams, and we can basically cover this volleyball court so that this area can itself be used as an assembly space for the swim team. I think, Michelle, correct me, generally there's, they assume around five times a year, so in those times a year. So in those five times a year, we can basically cover this volleyball court, and this volleyball court can be used as a place for assembly for the swim teams. So these are basically the changes which, and again, this is sort of inclusive playground, the location of the inclusive playground. Just want to repeat, the plan nowhere recommends that the inclusive playground has to go in its location. There was a question raised last month at the city council meeting, do we have enough space? That's the reason why we are basically showing you that there is enough space and how this inclusive playground can go in its place, its location. Talking about the budget, this is the budget of the master plan, this is not the budget of the city, this is not the city budget. So again, Phase 1A and 1B is basically the, what it takes to open this playground as soon as possible. So in Phase 1A, we want to address the site challenges and open the northward parks to the public. And then Phase 1B, we will create a northward loop by installing a sidewalk on a Densmore Road. Next steps. So if the city decides to vote today for adopting this master plan, what are the next steps? We want to work with the stakeholders, we want to work with the Milton residents to name this park. Throughout this planning process, we have been calling this to be a former Milton Country Club property. We want to have a good name for this great space. So number one, we want to work with the stakeholders, city council members, to name this park. The second thing is implementation. As we just saw, the planning process has been going on for more than a year now. The city acquired this property around 18 months back. We want to work with the stakeholders to open this park so that the city residents can enjoy. A plan implementation. Throughout this planning process, we are talking about various phases. The entire park cannot be opened, the entire master plan cannot be implemented in a year or two. It's a long, it's a long-range plan. But we want to start with the implementation of this master plan. We have a phased approach, phased 1A, 1B, phase, so again, it's basically how you can open this park to address the safety issues and then can build accordingly. And then pursuing the grants. Again, we need to have adopted master plan to go after the funding. So once we know what the master plan recommends, we can always work with the state, we can work with various organizations to get the funding for this great project. Questions? I never wanted to repeat the entire presentation which we gave you last month. So these are some of the changes which we made based on the feedback which we received from last month, but I just.
Parag, would you be so kind as to discuss a little bit what the, what the implications of a master plan are and, and what they can expect going forward?
Sure. Master plan is a visionary document, it's a roadmap. It's not like once you are approving the master plan, each and every project will be implemented the way it is in the master plan. Again, for example, master plan gives you many options for installing the fence. We are not saying the fence should be A, B, or C. We are giving you the options, it depends upon city council priorities, it depends upon the funding levels which are available. The master plan is basically giving you a roadmap based on the community input. We have, we received a number of, a lot of community input through online surveys, through community meetings. So it's basically a visionary document, a roadmap. Implementation is totally different. Implementation of the master plan depends upon the city's budget, depends upon the priorities of the city council, and the priorities of the Milton residents. Is this fair to say? Yes?
Any questions? I know we have a lot of public comment. Any questions to Parag before we have public comment? Okay. Public comment?
I just want to say one thing. Once we will start implementing the master plan, we will again come in front of the city council to get your recommendations.
Thank you.
First public comment is from Andy Wilson.
Hello, thank you. My name is Andy Wilson, live at 15285 High Grove Road, adjacent to the first hole, former first hole, the former Milton Country Club. I just wanted to say a few comments, not necessarily in opposition to the, to the resolution to move forward, just with a couple of things in the actual plan. Wanted to make sure, first of all, that the promises that the council made to the residents of the club, or of the neighborhood that borders the club, with regards to public, private property boundaries and fencing barriers, et cetera. Want to make sure that that's included in the plan as well, as promises were made for that. Secondly, I do, unfortunately, I don't support the, the actual inclusive park at the, at the former Milton Country Club. I don't think it's the right place for, for that particular park. I support the idea. I think it might be better off at Bell Memorial, where there's already, flat land already cleared for this park. I'm worried about the increase of large vehicle traffic on Densmore Road, including buses and things like that, and just more traffic on Densmore Road in general. I'm worried about the impact to the neighborhood with the possibility of the, of the all-inclusive park in addition to the tennis courts. Again, I'm not necessarily in opposition to everything in the, in the plan, just that, just really that one particular thing, the all-inclusive park. I just don't think it's the right place for it. I'm worried about the, the impact to the neighborhood and the increased traffic on Densmore. That's it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Beth Wilson.
Beth Wilson, 15285 High Grove Road. I know I spoke last week, and as I've looked at the plan, I just want to say a couple more comments. I do think it's important for there to be a vote to approve moving forward with the plan. However, like I mentioned last week, I have some serious reservations about an inclusive playground in this area. With a swim team that's growing with over 150 kids, possibly even more next year, that back area is crucial for our functioning. And having a playground with lots of slides, with wet kids, could turn into lots of accidents. And I just don't feel like it's a smart place to have a pool near a playground, just like I said last time. I have a special needs niece who's 25 years old, at the level of about a four-year-old. I know, and I am sensitive to that. And I know my sister wouldn't want to be looking over her shoulder wondering if someone left a gate open. It is dangerous to have a playground close to a pool. And that's one aspect. My other aspect is, I don't understand the rush on this playground. As everyone has stated, you guys have owned the property for over a year and a half, and people want to use those trails. And the swim team would like to have some things to make it look nicer for our families. I would hope that those things would be what you, what you focus on first. Getting even the grass behind that clubhouse looking, you know, nice, where we can actually not have kids in dirt, you know, over, you know, the rush for a playground. I, I think it's great that Children's Charities has the money to give this to the city of Milton, but is this the right place? I, I don't think so. I think waiting for an active park where maybe there could be an addition, possibly even a basketball court, I know the Shepherd Center does a lot, in that area would be a great asset. But just to throw it in the back behind an old clubhouse, I don't feel it is beneficial to the swim team, the tennis, or the neighborhood, which I am also a part of. In conclusion, I'm asking that the city council approve the plan, but defer on that playground. Wait until there has been more information about every bit of that playground. It looks larger on that map than what is currently proposed on the plan that you're looking at from the consultants. And that does worry me, considering, like I said, we have at least 10 pop-up tents that we put out there for just one team. If we had two teams, that would be 10 pop-up, I mean, excuse me, 20 pop-up tents and over 250 kids. So please consider that when you are moving forward with what is going to go behind there. Thank you.
And the next speaker is Terry O'Brien.
Hello, council. My name is Terry O'Brien, I live at 2535 Bethany Church Road. And I just wanted to say basically, thank you to the city of Milton for keeping tennis and swim going. And it's, both, both programs have flourished in the past year and a half and growing so fast. Alta and USTA host over 100, 1,500 matches per year. And so we have a lot of traffic playing other teams, a lot of people coming in and from other clubs. So I think the most important thing is obviously the clubhouse and having a place to, for the men and women to change and the kids too. Right now, we're currently have porta-potties that we're using, and we're trying to make the best of it. But I think that would be one of the first issues, especially with inclement weather, whether with the swim team or myself will have a place to go if, if it's dangerous out there. So the plan to me looks great for the, Plan A, I believe, with the clubhouse. I think it'll be just nice to have tennis matches and a place to eat and, and outside with that area around the back of the courts would be great for just hosting events and everything. The other thing I was talking about, wanted to talk about was the layout of the courts. There were some issues with people concerned about getting too close to the residents' homes with the additional courts that's possible in the Plan B. But the way the layout is now, the courts would just be pushed closer to the street. So really, we would be just cutting into the parking lot, not so much like taking trees down and, and having to just getting closer to the neighborhood. So the way the layout, I thought, was perfect for that. So just wanted to say thanks again, and appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bob Volz. Mr. Volz, you indicated that you were, you were affiliated with the neighborhood. Are you speaking on? You indicated you were affiliated with the neighborhood. Are you speaking on behalf of the neighborhood? Okay. Thank you, sir.
I live in the neighborhood. Affiliation for me. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm Robert Volz, 15210 High Grove Road in the subdivision directly, and our home is number 10 on the, on the side facing the 18th Fairway, the old 18th Fairway. Just first, as a point of clarity or transparency, I know a lot of us have talked in the neighborhood from time to time. Would you explain how much was paid in dollars for the active part of the Milton Country Club? And how was that amount decided? And last, was that amount credited back to the bond fund? That's just in, in the form of a question that possibly you could answer for us. Secondly, we, the stakeholders, were promised, I thought, one more meeting where we would all be invited to discuss, you know, the, the plans as they were going. Now that thought process obviously changed, and for those of us that are able to get the council meetings or try to listen to it, if it works, sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, that's where we found out and gathered whatever information we have. Third point I wanted to make is that we received this plan last Friday, and it's only three days ago, and therefore stating that the Milton Country Club Park possibly would go ahead as an agenda item tonight, which it is on the agenda. And the only adjacent homeowners I respectfully request that you hold off voting on this tonight and give the stakeholders the opportunity to meet and discuss it. Fourth, the playground was the only mention at the council meeting in July that I was able to witness before it went out. But anyway, that was the first we had heard of it, and now it's been incorporated into the plan. And just why the rush? We need more input. And I tend to agree that it might be way, way too much use of that land, because we love the tennis and we love the swimming, even though we don't have kids, we know how important that was in the old days and is now. Fifth, the, there's a new bioswale behind the 18th green that's now being shown on the plan, and I believe it states that it's coming from the new parking lot. I would just like to know how that's going to be drained, because the way it's drawn, it looks like it's drained over towards the homes and not over towards the creek. And the sixth point I wanted to make is if you want to vote on something to get started, we recommend installing that four-wheeled fence around our homes in the backyards. And the last one is number seven, and that's the traffic in the neighborhood. We still, I think a lot of us are concerned about possible traffic not only on Densmore, but within our neighborhood, because obviously in the back of the subdivision on High Grove Club Drive, it is pure access into the park. And obviously, some people are already using it. That's it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Judy Birds.
Judy Birds, 1165 Green Drive, Milton, Georgia. I'm glad to see the progress on the plan. I am a little bit concerned about the approximate $17 million price tag. I think that seems extravagant, and I trust that the council will set priorities as to the use and rollout of that money and spend our tax dollars wisely.
Next speaker is Stephanie Minat. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Minat. I'm at 775 Quarter Path Lane. Thank you for this opportunity to speak regarding the potential build of the all-inclusive playground. While I feel that this playground would be an asset to the community, I am concerned that the location proposed at the old Milton Country Club property is not an ideal long-term solution. Here are a few of my concerns. Impact to the current active swim team. We currently use the back green field space during swim meets to stage approximately 250 athletes. We are concerned that the addition of a playground in what is essentially our dugout would impede the flow of our meets and create challenges associated with finding our athletes on the playground and maintaining safety. Second, the size of the park playground. We are concerned at the overall size of the park plan. One-third of an acre is the equivalent of 14,375 square feet. To give an illustration, the park would be roughly the size of the current clubhouse, which is on Milton Country Club property, which is approximately 6,700 square feet, so two times. This is a very large play park in the back of the active acres and could take up a considerable amount of the available unused space. This would limit future development or expansions of the current park programs. I would ask that you please table the vote regarding the playground components until more information regarding the impact to existing park programs and neighbors can be determined. I do support moving forward with implementation of the remaining renovations and updates indicated in the draft plan. Thank you so much for your continued support.
Okay, next speaker is Scott Minat.
Scott Minat, 775 Quarter Path Lane, Milton. So my comment also concerns the all-inclusive playground. It's not about being against the playground. It's a great and noble cause. It's my concern is about where it's placed. And you've heard this point, well, these two points that I'm going to make a couple of times in varying ways. But the impact that it might have on the swim team and our staging area. I don't know how many of y'all have been to a swim meet and seen how it goes. I know several of you came by swim meets last year. It's hectic. And it's even more hectic behind the fence. And so the struggles that we might be faced with by having a playground in proximity of our area is, it's a pretty big impact on us. The, being a third of an acre, it's large. I know there's been a lot of confusion on the size of it. Their website that's been out there for numerous years says well over, well, it says over an acre. And I've been made aware that it's a third of an acre recently, so I trust that it's a third of an acre. The one thing that's not contemplated is the fencing around the playground. So while the playground's a third of an acre, how much additional space does that fencing take up? Because it's obviously not going to run up right to the border of that space. Also, you know, how does the placement of the playground affect future plans for the facility if you're planning on, you know, building out a clubhouse, hosting events? How does that impact the view? How does it impact what might be hosted there? Just some things to think about. Again, I'm not against the playground, and I'm in support of it. But I just think we need to table this and have some more discussion on it. And this is the first time I've been aware that, or made aware that there could potentially be, you know, other alternatives as to where it's located. So I mean, I support going forward with the master plan. If we can table the discussion on the playground and then have some more discussion about where alternatives could be and also see on the map what impact with the fencing, how big is it going to be? I mean, does that have an impact? And so if y'all could take that into consideration, I would appreciate it, and thanks for the time to speak.
Next speaker is Charles Squires.
Hello, my name is Charles Squires. I live at 250 Weatherwood Circle. And I'm on the board of Children's Charities, recently on the board. I know from listening and being part of the board and talking to the ladies who work their butts off to raise the money to make the park, there's a concern about the placement of it. There's a concern with the members of, I totally understand as having kids. I don't have anybody who does swimming or tennis. I just would have a couple of questions, and I just don't know the answers to them. And I'm not trying to point it in a wrong direction. But I was a member at Milton Country Club prior, and I know they had a swim team there before. And that was a golf course behind it beforehand, so I'm not sure how they did their swim meets when it was a golf course. Maybe they did use it. I don't know. I don't know. But I would ask that question. And I also, my wife, who owns a company called Milton Speech Pathology, and she is a speech pathologist and works with children with special needs every day, and I'm not sure if everybody knows, but about 15% of our population here in Milton, for children between the ages of three years old and 21, do have special needs. And I don't see any parents of those children, probably because they're not on the swim team. I understand that, and maybe there are some. Maybe they have a whole league for it. I don't know. And I don't mean to step on any toes with that. But something like this for our community would definitely be a major point of difference between us and just about everybody else. I think swimming is fabulous, and I know it's important and very important to the parents of the children, and more importantly, to the children, and also to tennis. But I'm not sure if any other subdivisions in Milton do swim team. But I know there are no other special needs play parks in Milton, and there really aren't any in our area. This would be something that not only our government people, but every family in our neighborhood would be more than proud to be able to say that we have something like this. So I'm sure there are some concessions that can be made to make sure that, you know, that the people who are on swim team can be accommodated. And, you know, we need the children to be safe, and they need to have places to go to change and so forth. And of course, we can make that happen. But again, this could be something that would definitely be something that Milton could point to and say that we are unique, you know, that we think beyond the standard protocol, like something at Will's Park or something along those lines. So thank you all very much. I greatly appreciate it.
The next item, or the next public comment card that I have, I have to ask Mark Holmes. Did you want to make a comment or you just wanted to, okay, he was in support of this item. Next speaker is Colt Woodall.
Let me get that address. Colt Woodall, 2005 Drummond Pond, Milton. Sorry, I was just writing notes back there. So a couple of points, and I'm not really speaking in either opposition or support. I kind of have an alternate proposal to some parts of the plan that's been proposed. And I've been following this closely. I think everybody knows on council, I'm currently serving on the Green Space Committee. I'm also a resident in North Valley. I walk the trail on the North Valley side of Chicken Creek all the time. I've had a vantage point to kind of view the other side of the trail for years and kind of say, you know, I wonder what would be good over there. So I've been thinking about this for quite a while. And I think some of you may know in my professional life, I manage a lot of designers. And I'm not a landscape architect, but I have a little bit of a design hat. I sort of fancy myself a bit of a designer. So I'm going to put on my design hat. And I look at the plan, and there's a few things that I don't think work that well. And I'm talking specifically the trails. Nothing related to the active area of the park. But the, I don't think the layout that's been proposed really fits the space all that well. It's a bit of a mesh, kind of a grid. It looks to me like it's leveraging the existing cart path. The cart paths, they're A, they're not going to last. They're in rough condition. They're way too steep. They don't make good walking trails. They don't take advantage of the space. They were designed to be cart paths. They were not designed to enjoy the space as it is. It spreads out people too much across the land, which creates the need to have fences up around the properties. Not as much shade, again, not optimal. The phasing, so basically building out these trails on the north part of the property and then as phase two, if I understand the plan right, I think that's what it says. Phase two would then be do trails on the south part of the property. I don't know why. I don't think that's necessary. And I don't think, again, that, I don't think it uses the land very well. So when I think about trails and what gets used, you know, in Atlanta suburban areas, it's trails that are shady and run along creeks. All the ones that are most popular, that's what they do. They're wide. They facilitate plenty of walking, walking pets, strollers. We've got 1.6 miles of creek. So what I would recommend is to rejigger the plan, essentially wipe it clean in terms of the trails, and run a 1.6-mile trail down the side of the creek. So you have creek, wide trail, permeable surface, just like it's in the plan. Trees on both sides that'll grow up and frame the space, provide shade. Four-board horse fence just outside the trees. And what's that going to do? It's going to cut, it's going to cut the length of fencing that has to be built, which cuts cost. It's going to eliminate a lot of stuff that runs around inside and up and down over the hills, which I don't think will get used that much. It'll give you a flat trail, and you'll only need to connect it to wherever the parking is or maybe to the active areas acre. So I think that solves a few problems. I think it potentially cuts cost. I think it gives you something, gives the community something that will probably get used a lot more than what's currently drawn. And frankly, I think it's a good way to experience the land. You don't have to walk across all the property in order to experience the property and use the property, right? You've got to have a good vantage point, nice and shady, bubbling brook along the side. So that's my recommendation, and thank you.
Next speaker, Sharon Mays. You didn't indicate which agenda item. I'm assuming it's this one. Is that correct?
This one.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Sharon Mays, and I reside at 15160 High Grove Road, Milton, Georgia. I'm here to ask you to, first of all, say thank you very much to Milton City Council and mayor for having the vision for this park. I am very excited about it. It is going to be a wonderful addition to Milton, so thank you for having the vision to go forward with this. However, I do request that you postpone a vote on this plan as proposed, primarily because we received the notice on Friday that it would be voted upon today, and a lot of people have been out of town. We would like some more time to view the proposal, get more familiar with it. And particularly, our concern is, and my concern, is asking for postponement, particularly on the all-inclusive park. Whereas I have participated in fundraising events for this park before, and I support it, I question whether that is the right location for it. I particularly think, feel that a more major thoroughfare would be appropriate. We are concerned about bringing more traffic on Dinsmore Road with its curves. Another car went through the fence the other day. And particularly, large vehicle traffic on Dinsmore Road is a concern, and especially if they are from non-Milton residents. It also will cause the crowding behind the clubhouse and conflict with particularly the swim team, which I think has been a tremendous addition to what Milton offers. Also, the adjacent landowners will be affected by the additional activity behind that. That possibly can be mitigated. But the biggest concern is just overall the effect on the swim team, on the options for the clubhouse, that now you've got this large playground behind it. The, as I said, the traffic on Dinsmore. And also, the needs for improvements in the clubhouse. Once we commit to this, even if we've got funding for actually building the playground, who is going to maintain it? Is that going to be a cost to Milton? And that, I guess, would be a question as much as anything, is I'm not sure who is going to be funding the cost of maintaining this playground. And also, the same question about the fencing around the playground. How are you going to keep things separate when there are swim teams going on? Also, I was, as a previous gentleman said, I thought that the stakeholders would have another opportunity to see the plan and to ask direct questions before it was presented for a vote. So I thank you very much. I thank you for your vision, but I would like some more time for us to understand the effect of this all-inclusive playground. Thank you.
We have one more comment, and then one to read into the record if the person is still in the audience. Lauren Holmes.
Lauren Holmes, 13900 Haygood Road. I am co-founder of Children's Charities. Mandy was not able to make it today. She is out of town. Children's Charities is donating an all-inclusive playground to the city of Milton, who is providing the land. Without spending any more money, the Old Country Club is the only and best place for the playground to go. And all-inclusive means all can play. It doesn't mean handicapped only. This playground is for children to play together. The city purchased the Old Country Club for an active and passive park. We should be maximizing the active park area since we don't have many active parks in Milton or the money to purchase more at this time. The new and unique equipment being installed in the playground is top of the line and can be used for all ages. Starting four years ago, we have been working with the city to find a home for the all-inclusive playground. A year and a half ago, when the city purchased the Old Country Club, Children's Charities knew this was the best place for it to go. There are already so many activities going on where people come together and socialize. This is just one more place for that to happen. I have been to several meetings over the last year and a half, standing here telling everyone about the all-inclusive park and us wanting it to go in the country club. So hearing from other people that they'd never heard of this before is amazing. If they just listen to the website when it's on or come to the meetings, then they would know I have been here. In the packet I have given you, there is a rendering of what the playground could look like, which you can see here. The next page is a copy of the site plan, which shows you the size of the playground. And I do apologize And I do apologize, it did say on the website that it was up to an acre, but when we started this four years ago, we thought it might be up to an acre, and it was never changed. The approximate size is .385 acres, the way it is stated on that site plan. The next several pages are a list of the equipment that will be going in the playground. The last packet shows you we are certified 100% ADA compliant. The playground will be fenced in, with either four-board fencing, with chicken wire, or wrought iron-looking aluminum metal fencing. This is up to the city on what they choose. It will have locking gates. The flooring is approximately four inches poured placed, poured in place rubber mulch that looks like this. No dirt to get into the pool. If anyone would like to take a look at that, I'd be more than happy to show it to you. I understand people are having issues about parking. When there are many activities happening at the same time, this will always be an issue, if there's a playground or not. I am sure at other swim meets and alta matches, there is not enough parking, and people have to find places to park. We are lucky at the Old Milton, at the Old Country Club, to have a lot of parking places, even if it's not enough when time comes for multiple activities going on. I don't believe there will ever be so many parents with children in the playground taking up all of the parking places. I understand the swim team needing somewhere for staging, but I also believe with the playground and the location it is, tucked in the black, in the back, the swim team can work out a way to find staging for the kids. They could lock the gates. You need an adult or an older child to unlock the gates anyway. Or they could just say, stay out of the playground. The city of Milton staff and consultants have been working with the citizens of Milton for quite a while, not just a week or two, on what they would like to have in the country club, active and passive. They have held several meetings, have sent out surveys. There is no reason to delay a vote on what should be done with the Old Country Club and the playground. The playground should be in the Old Country Club. Does anybody have any questions?
We'll have some questions after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last comment card is from Martha Jureville. Are you still in the audience?
I am.
Okay. She does not want to speak, but she wants this read into the record. As a Milton citizen and a pediatric nurse for over 28 years, this play park and its equipment and flooring is much needed in our community to serve all of our children. The Country Club of Milton is a perfect location. That's all the public comment cards I have.
Great. Thank you. All right, questions for staff? Lauren?
I have questions. My first question is, it's been brought to my attention that we have an emergency situation with restrooms over there. We're working out of porta-potties, so with the plan that we're considering tonight, I assume that that will be, I mean, are we going to be able to immediately correct that situation? Or is it, sorry?
Sorry, I thought you were done. In a couple of weeks, coming before you, for some FY19 budget amendments are going to include some immediate work we're looking to do for the, for the country club, both the active and passive acres. Part of that would be, for the active, which would include the clubhouse, will include a very basic remodel of the clubhouse, and all, but it will also include repairing the various plumbing issues that we've uncovered since we've been in there. Once we get that worked out, obviously, we'll have, what we're looking to do is to build out, if you look at the basic plan, it involves getting both the men and women's locker room up and running, creating more space for them to have changing, but also to have the bathrooms operating. In addition to that, you'll see in the plan, two multi-use areas, and a very basic area for a future build-out of maybe a small eating area. We already have the, the industrial kitchen in there. Don't know what, at what level, the, all the, the various machines are operating at. So that would be something we'd have to look at, and maybe long-term, look at contracting with someone, see if somebody wants to come and operate that for us, but that's a long-term decision. So we would, we look to build out and get those bathrooms operating. Not going to get it done this year for the, for the swim team, but I anticipate that it would be completed in time for next year.
So my question again would be, we, we do have some issues that are somewhat urgent, and so going to, back to what we're voting on tonight, just some clarity on that. We are looking at this master plan, which is a roadmap to what we want to consider for this property. And so the next question is, I think that this is associated with our budgeting process and needing to move money into the right buckets to be able to proceed. Is that correct?
So some of it is, is, their timing is of the essence. We want to start some of the emergency repairs on the clubhouse as quickly as possible, because right now it's just not usable. So that's why it's coming before you as an FY19 amendment, as opposed to something in the FY20 budget. What we'll be looking to do, just to give you a little preview, is moving some funds from the FY19 operating into the capital budget to be able to start addressing those as soon as possible. Once we, we have the funds available, we'll start being able to do, we have a mold issue going on in there, we're going to have to remediate the mold before we can even let, get any of the other work done, which is a direct result of shoddy plumbing work that was done prior to us owning the building, and not something that an inspector would have uncovered without pulling all the toilets out of the, out of the floor. So as these, as we started recognizing these issues, we, we started trying to address them as quickly as possible with some stop-gap measures. So that would be a time of the essence issue. Now, some of the longer-term planning, as you're getting into phase, phase two, phase 1C and phase two, those are longer-term planning projects, those are not something we're going to be coming to you for, with the FY19 amendments, they're, they have significant price tags associated with them, we'd be coming back before you as we start getting through phase 1A and 1B and the basic plan on the, on the active space, to see what it is you wanted to see with the, with the rest of the, the club. Parag, did I do okay on that?
Yes. I just, again, thank you. It's great to see that the city of Milton is moving forward towards implementation of this master plan. But again, the master plan is just a visionary document, it's, it's not codified or something. It's a visionary document, it's a roadmap, but it's great to see that the city manager just mentioned, that we are moving ahead to implement some of the sections of the master plan.
Okay. So as, as we consider what, what we are doing tonight, we're approving the master plan, and then we're going to have a budget discussion about specifically what is contained and what we're approving. Is that right? Or can we, do we need to go back to the, is there a slide that looks at what amount of money and what items were?
Sure. Again, I just want to basically say that we can have a budget discussion, but the budget discussion is not part of the master planning process.
Okay.
Again, the budget discussion is the city's budget process, but the master planning process, again, this budget is here, which you can see in this slide, and how the city is funding this budget, from which pools off the funding, that's the master planning exercise.
Okay.
So what you're referring to, unfortunately, I'm, I'm still working, there you go, you just brought it up.
Okay, that's it.
So what, what I'll be looking to come, come before you in a couple of weeks is going to be 1A and 1B. And that's, that's in the trail section of it. That's going to involve, I, I have more information on my sheet than is in front of you. It's going to involve dealing with some of the challenges. We have to make it safe. We have a lot of drainage basins and things like that that have been compromised, they weren't built well or maintained, and now we have large gaping holes. We have to take care of those. A lot of those are going to turn into, as opposed to having the underground irrigation and the underground moving of stormwater like you would have normally on a golf course, we want to return those more to a natural-type setting, and move them back into creeks and draining directly into the creek, as opposed to going through all this, this different plumbing, which just isn't necessary. To be quite honest with you, it, most of them have degraded to the point where they're not doing anything anymore. That's part of, once we can get that done, then we're, we're looking at, again, coming before you, this will come before you, removing the pavement that is currently on the easements for the cart paths. So we'd be looking to fund the removal of the car, of the, of the pavement that's within the easements, and then reconnecting those, those two sections in a manner that makes sense, keeping people off of people's property, of private property, and filling those with some type of temporary cover that will allow and be obvious to the walker that you're, where to go to keep you off of the, off of the trails. And we're also, the, the other piece of that will be the connection on Dinsmore. So you'll be able to connect both prongs of the, of the park with each other and make the full loop. And that will be in addition to the, to what I said with the clubhouse, and knocking down the, the cart barn and shed over there, which are deteriorating. I think I hit them all.
Are you good, Lauren?
Yeah, no, one, one, so it sounds like every, at every step of this process, where you're going to come back to us and we're going to talk in, in greater detail.
Yes.
Hopefully, excruciating detail about the details of plans and the money associated with it.
Yes, definitely. The implementation will again be coming in front of the city council.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Jeff?
So if we roll back the clock far enough in a couple of these questions, I'm trying to address questions that came from our citizens. The original purchase of Milton Country Club included approximately, I think it was like 135, 137 acres of land that were purchased as part of the green space bond that the city approved a couple of years ago. As it turned out, the component of the golf property that we wanted to leave intact and therefore make an active component of the park, I want to say it was roughly 16 acres, is that about right?
Seven acres.
Seven acres.
Oh, just seven acres?
Yes, seven, yeah.
I added a one for some reason, I'm not sure why. But the important piece is that we recognize that the green space bond couldn't fund active park space, so what we did was we reimbursed the green space fund with the dollar equivalent for the acreage that we were going to use as active park. Correct?
There was actually, I can answer that, sorry, Parag. There was actually no commingling of the funds. The green space bond paid for the active, I mean, the, the.
Okay, so we never had to reimburse that fund?
No.
Okay.
There were two separate parts of money, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then regardless of the details of what's going to be in, what's going to be out, at the end of the day, all of the maintenance that's associated with any park in the city of Milton is main, is burdened to the city. So the city is responsible for any kind of maintenance that's associated with park facilities or parkland, or whatever it happens to be, correct?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay. And I'm addressing these questions to you, Parag, but I know that some of this falls into the Parks and Rec group, and some of the information.
You can always come, come here, yeah.
I know. And I have a couple of questions, I think, that are going to flow his way. But when we first took over the country club, one of our, we, we knew for a fact that the tennis program and the swimming program were pieces of, that came with the park that we, or the country club, that we couldn't just do away with, right? Because, you know, people were actively using them, some citizens were using them, I mean, it was, it was something that was an ongoing concern. We made decisions at the time to key, to, to engage the tennis program and make it part of the city. We also looked at the swimming pool and said, hey, it makes sense for us to keep that going as well, not only because of the swim team, but because of the use of the swimming pool as an amenity for the city itself. And I would say, in the first year, we probably got as much use out of the recreational use out of the pool as we did use from a swim team point of view.
Yes.
However, we did talk about the condition of the pool, and whether or not the pool was going to be sustainable as is, or whether we were going to have to invest some amount of money in some major repairs. And the way I remember it, so the question I have, am I remembering this correctly? The way I remember it was that the pool was just, it barely met the standards for what the swim team needed. And the condition of the pool itself was, we could probably patch it up a little bit for a certain period of time, but long-term, we were going to have to invest some money to get it really in the condition that it needs to be in. Is that still a fair statement? Jim, did you hear all that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I did. It is an accurate statement. We had to do quite of an investment in repairs to the pool last year to make it useful. It had significant cracks that we had to drain the pool and repair it. We were able to get through the season right up until the last weekend, when the motor failed, the pump motor failed. This year, when we uncovered the pool, we found the pool empty again. Other cracks had formed. And so this year, council graciously funded a complete resurfacing of the main pool, as well as the smaller walk-in, or what's called kiddie pool. So those two resurfacings have come to over $45,000. We did have one significant problem at the start of the season. When a filter tank broke and drained half the pool, we had to get the filter repaired and then refill the pool. We also had a brief outage one day, a couple of weeks back, when a motor failed, but we were able to get our hands on a motor much faster. That's because last year, it was the Friday night of Labor Day weekend, that's why we couldn't find a motor.
Yeah.
Okay? That's, is that a, answer your question, sir?
That answers part of the question. The other part is, are, is there any consideration being given to the planning for the park that would include any kind of major upgrades to the swimming pool?
Yes, sir. There's a number of things we're looking at in the FY20 budget, which would include resurfacing the deck of the pool area itself, some upgrades to the pool, excuse me, to the pump house. We're also looking, the swim team has asked if we could get improved, what are called starting blocks, as well as swim flags that help with the, improve the experience, new shade for the period, there's a variety of, a new vacuum. We're, we're looking to upgrade that pool as much as we can and improve the overall experience for the user.
Okay. All right, thank you. And real quick, Jim, can you remind me how many events, how many swim meets we have, we conduct there every year?
Yes, sir.
It's like five swim meets?
Well, the swim team itself starts in early May with practices. Then just before Labor Day, they have a practice meet by themselves. From there, they then start their regular swim season, which consists, it consists of five meets. It is a shared combination of home and away meets. It is my understanding, and I saw it the last two years, that it alternated to, in 2018, there was two home meets and three away meets. This year, they hosted three home meets and two away meets. So assuming that they continue to flip-flop like that, we're talking a maximum of one practice meet and three home meets. And, and these meets are, over the course of one night, each meet is a night.
Okay. On the tennis side of the program, the, we're looking at adding two additional tennis courts to bring the total number up to six.
Yes, sir.
Correct? And, and six, you know, is, I would say it's a minimum for a city-level tennis program, but I don't, I don't want to speak to the active involvement of our citizens right now in, in that program. But we are adding, we're making plans to add on to the facilities from a tennis point of view.
That is a correct statement.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So getting back to you, Parag. Thank you, Jim. A couple of other things. The, I mean, phase 1A, which is really going to be step one for us, if we improve, if we approve the, the master plan, is really to get our hands on the condition of the park itself. I mean, we've been making sure that we're not, you know, experiencing major problems, but as Stephen mentioned, there's some mold issues in the clubhouse, there's some plumbing problems. I mean, there's some work that need, we need to act on right away, as soon as we make a decision to move forward. And then you guys have outlined very well in the master plan, where that starts, what phase 1B is, what, you know, the next step, the next step, I think you go all the way up to phase two. But, and like you said, the funding is separate from this discussion. We may know what needs to be done. We may know what needs to be done, we got to get our hands on, how much is that going to cost? We've got some estimates right now, but, you know, how we fund that and things like that, or maybe still questions that need to be answered.
Yes, sir.
That's a fair statement, right?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay.
Again, our goal is to open the park for the Milton residents as soon as possible in a safe manner.
Right.
So that's Phase 1.
And the last thing I wanted to ask about is, had to do with some questions that got brought up tonight. The trail layout, the trail widths, where the trails are going to go, we've given some guidance in the master plan in terms of what we think, but I think you've said this a couple of times tonight, nothing's set in stone, it's not codified. In other words, it's not, we're not setting ourselves up to where we can only do this, this is our only option, and we can't deviate from that plan, correct?
Yes, again, as I mentioned, this is not a zoning code. This is not a form-based code. It's a visionary document, it's not codified. I am sure the consultant and the staff has done a great job in the last 16 months to come up with all trail options. And when the comment was made, staff was basically discussing that we have already thought of all these things. But anyway, if we come up with some additional good options, some good additional ideas, we can always implement those. So it's not like we cannot go forward and then we cannot change anything.
And in your presentation, you mentioned the fact that we purchased the property way back at the beginning of 2018. I want to say we actually started conversations prior to that.
Yes.
And we've had active input from the community, the Parks and Rec group has weighed in and seen some of this, you guys have seen some of this, we've engaged a, you know, consultant to come in and help us put together the plan. I mean, this isn't something that we've just thrown together at the last minute. This is the result of quite a bit of work, quite a bit of time, quite a bit of input from multiple stakeholders, correct?
Yes, again, I was not there when it all took place, but I am very proud to say that the staff and the consultant did an excellent job for community input. Not only in October, we have presented this plan to the city council three times. Even a couple of months back, we did an online survey, our communications director and the staff worked, having some sort of a online survey, and we got a very good response for our online survey also, because we wanted to reach out to the community again to get their feedback of how this clubhouse will be used. So again, hundreds of hours have been, basically went just to get input from the community members, because it's their park, it's a neighborhood's park, and the people from the residents, they will be the one who will be enjoying this park. So we wanted to make sure that their input gets heard. And we have, the recommendations which we are making today is basically based on the input which we have received, the feedback which we receive from the community.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Peyton.
Any other questions? Carol?
Yeah. So I need some clarity on exactly what we're being asked to consider tonight, because we have two passionate groups, and I think we need to clarify exactly what we're being asked to consider tonight.
Sure. What we are requesting that the city council members adopt the master plan. As I mentioned, master plan is not a codified document, it's not a zoning code, it's not a form-based code, it's a visionary document. Throughout the master plan, we are laying a number of options. A number of options is basically phasing, number of options of different fences. It also has cost estimates assigned to each and every option, and it depends upon the priorities of the city council, priorities of the Milton residents, how they want to implement this master plan. So what we have in front of you is basically the master plan. It's not like if you are voting on the master plan today, you are voting on this playground. And we will go ahead and install this playground tomorrow because the site plan shows the playground over here. Same thing with fencing, with the fencing. The master plan has a number of options of the fences. It also gives you the cost estimates of each and every option. So the city manager and the city staff will be coming in front of you to talk to you about how we can implement this master plan, how much funding we have in front of us.
Okay, so I appreciate that. So when do we exactly vote on where the playground goes so that our citizens, our nice citizens on both sides will know when they have to go through this again?
No, again, it's, again, as I will say, this is the implementation part. We do have enough space for the playground that can go in. But again, the implementation will depend upon, once the master plan is adopted, then we will again engage with the stakeholders and say how it could be implemented.
Okay.
I'm going to ask Ken jump in for a second there.
Councilman Coakley, and to the rest of the council, let me just offer up this, that obviously everything that Parag's saying is correct. But when we begin to move from vision into implementation, that's when state law and your procurement rules begin to kick in. So anything that we do with respect to the build-out likely is going to involve adherence to the state procurement regulations. So that's all going to have to be done at an open meeting, that's going to have to be done with all of the normal checks and balances that you all are used to. No one is going to accidentally build anything out there. And also, the city of Milton has a very rigorous procurement policy as well. So I say that just to give you some assurance, that please don't believe that, or feel concerned that, and whatever the council does tonight is of course up at the council, but if you approve this plan, you have not inexorably set us on a path toward building anything.
Same thing with Phase 1A and Phase 1B also. If you are voting on this plan, we do want to move ahead, but we don't have funding as of now. The funding discussion will come in front of the city council.
May I finish with just two fast questions? Jim and Parag and others, planning forward based on the numbers, are we going to need another pool? How does that work? An additional pool, not a pool replacing the current one?
I couldn't begin to answer that question, Councilman Coakley. We've got, the plan doesn't call for the need of an additional pool.
It'll be a prioritization decision made either by this council or a future council by the time we have the funding for that.
There's no projection at this point that we're at capacity, or we need another pool, or anything like that?
Three years ago, we weren't projecting the need for a pool. So now it's, so when you look at our master plan, at the Parks and Rec master plan, does talk about the need for a pool as part of our recreation offerings. But unlike some of our other metrics, it doesn't talk about dimensions, and you need X amount of square footage of pool per citizen, there's no level of service there. I think what'll eventually dictate that is going to be the level of usage we see at the current pool and the will of the council at the time when the funding, if the funding becomes available and you determine that that's your priority. You'll see, I think even if you go into the long-term plan of one, I don't want to waste your time with it, but one of the long-term plans shows a separate piece with a, you know, with a slide. I don't know that that ever happens. That's ultimately going to be how the community feels about that and the will of the council.
Okay. And then my last question would be for, and maybe you can answer, or I could direct it to children's charities. Is that truly the land that they need, or do they need more land? Is a third of an acre, I think of a third of an acre for something that just looks so magnificent, is it truly enough land?
Lauren, would you come up, please?
And I'm very complimentary of the build-out.
I have to admit, if we raise more money, we would want to add more equipment, but we're not talking about a lot more space. And it would be up to the city as to what is done. I mean, we're donating it, but we do not have control. I mean, the city has the control. So there was, at one time, I was hopeful that we were going to be able to add outdoor adult workout equipment, but it would be outside the fence probably, and wouldn't take up very much space. But again, that's only if we raised more money than what we have so far. So that could also be placed in a different park that we have. If we do raise money for something like that, it wouldn't have to go into the country club. But at this point, with the equipment that we have listed there, that is the size of the, it's right there, right above a third of an acre, that .385 or whatever it is. And as far as the fence going around, the fence would hug the playground as much as it could, because the flooring runs on average about $15 a square foot, if not more. It's almost as much as all of the equipment.
Oh.
So we're going to bring it out as far as it has to go to make it safe, and then the fencing would go in. So, and it will go according to, it won't be a rectangle or whatever, it will hug as much as it possibly can to keep the cost down.
Okay. Well, thank you all for the information. Thank you.
Rick?
Lauren, before you step back down, you had a whole list of equipment and the funds that you raised. The way you've got it set up right now, the funding that you would give to the city or donate to the city would include all that equipment, the surface, as well as the fence, and the safety side of the fence also from a lock. That's all included in what you're projecting you'll be able to donate to the city?
No, actually, what we are planning on donating at this time would be all of the equipment installed. But we started out with the city to begin with, talking about the city having to pay for the fence and any sidewalk that would go around it. Now, if we raise enough money where we can afford to put the fencing in, we will put the fencing in. But we started out basically stating that we weren't sure we were going to be able to do that. But, you know, at this point, with the people who have promised money to us, we have the money to possibly do that and move forward soon.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Can I ask, Lauren, so the picture that you provided us, we're just talking the playground equipment, the pavilion is obviously not.
That's correct. When we first did that rendering, which was over a year ago, we weren't sure, obviously, where it was going to go, and we were hoping to put in a pavilion next door to the playground so that the kids could get out from under the, you know, in the sun and everything. So that pavilion is not part of the third of an acre. I'm hoping that the city will put in a pavilion and maybe we could donate some money towards that pavilion the city is planning on putting in. So, but no, that's not included.
Okay, thank you.
Matt?
Thanks, Peyton. So I look at, we have four options, and I just want to make sure I know what they are tonight. So first of all, we could either deny the plan, postpone it, approve it with changes, or approve it as is, right? And so obviously, if we have the planning process by approving the plan, then we are basically giving staff direction to set aside budgetary items to be used to go into more specifics. Is that basically, I mean, obviously, why have a plan at all if, you know, we're not doing something, right? So what is the reason for that?
So what you would be giving us the go-ahead to do right now is saying, yep, we're keeping a pool. Because for all I know, you wanted to bulldoze the clubhouse, fill the pool, and turn the parking lot into a tennis court, the tennis courts into a parking lot. So this is, with the passage of this plan, we now know what we're committed to.
Sure.
And now it gives us the opportunity to start planning and bringing before you plans to fund. And you'll decide with each step whether or not that is your priority. Now, this does give us the roadmap. It generally prioritizes how we want to attack this, but it doesn't, it's not going to tell us exactly what we're going to do. It doesn't mean that we're going to start putting funding away for volleyball courts or anything like that. We would come before you and say, well, this is what we're seeing, whether it be in the 20 budget or the 21 budget, and as you'll see in the long-term budget, we budget out, the longer you budget out, the more abstract it gets. But we would be just doing general work. You're approving us to start moving forward and planning for you. If you reject us altogether, we, what we would know is that this plan's off-base.
Sure.
We need to go back to the drawing board. And conversely, if you decide, well, we don't like a certain aspect of the roadmap we see, then we would change the direction of that roadmap. But no, it would not give us the go-ahead to start moving funding around to be able to fund any of this. In fact, that's why I said the first thing you're going to hear from us is in the next couple of weeks when we come before you with the budget amendment, looking to fund the repairs we need just to get it open.
Gotcha. So denying, so approving of this plan just basically makes us open to the possibilities of whatever may exist. Now, some of those possibilities are more certain because they may already be there. Others are items that were in discussion, and others might be ideas that we haven't even thought of yet.
Plus, you're directing us to start putting staff resources into the planning process, start looking at the viability of these options, start, you know, and when we get down to the other phase, Phase 2, start really exploring the different types of material that we could use that would be viable for the trails, things along those lines. That's what this would be allowing us to do.
Gotcha.
I just want to add one more thing, what the city manager just mentioned. It gives us a general direction, and we can also try to pursue some additional funds, additional grants. Because we know that, okay, this is sort of a general direction, and if we want to write some grant applications, we know for which projects we should write the grant applications for.
That's a great point, Parag. Thank you for saying it. But you would still have, the council would still have the opportunity to weigh in, weigh in. You'd have the opportunity to decide whether or not that was the appropriate direction for the city.
Right. So as we argue those possibilities, which we've heard many tonight with regards to the playground, or I've also heard about, you know, people concerned about opening the park, and but what about safety and fencing, and how are we going to do that? We haven't really got into those details yet in particular, but that doesn't mean we won't. That goes into the more formalized process, which then Ken alluded to, which is the, you know, I was just thinking the wrong term, but the legal aspect of things, it basically now ties us and binds us to our decisions as we move forward. Is that basically right?
Right, of course. I mean, this council is not going to bind itself to any particular project until it's been fully vetted by staff and the council, and only when we, this council approves an agreement or a contract for services duly recorded on its minutes will that occur.
So approval of this plan is basically allowing us to be open to the possibilities of the direction that we're going, with additional advantages of grants or seeking ideas or staff resources that we can then have on paper. But that doesn't mean it can't change at any given time as we go forward, as the community directs us.
Yes.
Really?
It depends on the priorities, right? Depends on, we have a number of options, it depends on the priorities. You can basically choose option one, then you can choose option two, a difference on you.
Right, okay. So I just want to make sure I was clear on the process and decision that we're making tonight. Thank you.
Rick?
Yeah, just, I guess, to add to that then, so the specific components of what we're going to approve, this just gives us the framework, says yes, we'd like to move forward on this, but then the individual components that we have to fund, that's when we're going to, you'll bring specific dollar amounts, figures that we'll actually look, and this council will have to approve, and if we get into, I'd suggest when we get into the actual formulation of what plan, what trail plan and those type of things, maybe staff could actually bring that forward in a work session so that people have plenty of time to actually vet it and get input before we actually vote on it, not bring it forward as a final plan.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Laura?
Just a couple of suggestions, based on the plan that I've read. I'm sure that we went through the survey, and we looked at what those top choices for what the clubhouse would, what the community wanted, and that's obviously been fed back into what we would build to. I mean, first, we're going to get the mold out, and then we're going to start, you know, building to, I mean, I think I, like, youth activities or community gathering places and et cetera.
That's a correct statement, but even that's going to come back before you.
Before, okay, great.
Once we get into potential uses, right now, we're creating multi-use space that can be adaptable to any of the priorities that were set forth by the community and considered by the council. But we're not going to start instituting programming without coming back before you.
Great. And so with that in mind, I would just make a suggestion, because it looks like the demo trail that is on the north part of the park, I know that we have that identified to be ADA compliant. Is that right?
Just a small portion of it. So we wanted to have kind of a small section that would be kind of the greater vision of what the final trail system would be, and it would be kind of like an example trail. And we wanted to have that part ADA accessible. It wouldn't be the full amount, because with, if you wanted to open the park up quickly and use the existing cart paths for now, with getting the cart paths off the easements and doing a realignment on park property, if you're keeping those existing cart paths, they currently are likely not ADA accessible all the way through the U Loop. But there would be kind of an example trail that would be.
Yeah, and thank you for that, and I applaud that idea, but I just still, you know, we're doing so much over at Providence Park with ADA compliance. doing so much over at Providence Park with ADA compliance. You know, I don't know if we have enough money to be everything, every part to be everything to everyone. So, I would just want to make that point now, that maybe we need to focus, you know, our ADA compliance, you know, at Providence and do what we need to do to get the park open, because that's something that I hear all the time, is can we at least walk there while we're talking about how to get it open?
And that's what we're working on, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm a little outside my element, the ADA compliance aspect of this doesn't mean that the entire trail length is going to be accessible. You have to hit a certain percentage that would, then you can, it's now considered ADA compliant?
Yes, I would like to also add, that's been a very successful formula for us here at the City of Milton. There's trails at Bell Memorial Park, half are ADA compliant, half are not. We worked directly with the Milton Disability Awareness Committee when we were planning Bell Memorial Park, and, you know, they said it's not possible to make every trail fully ADA accessible, as long as you're getting to the major components, there's a way to get there with someone who is mobility-challenged, that's perfectly acceptable. And the plans that we are working on with Providence Park, earlier today, you approved the design contract, portions of that trail are fully ADA accessible, and there's also a portion that's a little tougher to walk in the woods, just like we have in Bell Memorial Park. It's trying to draw a reasonable mix between what is ADA accessible and what is not, but still takes advantage of the beauty of a property that we're working on, whether it's Providence Bell or Milton Country Club.
Thank you. And my last comment is just naming of the park. I think that's important, that the community be involved in that, and Councilmember Jamison wanted to be in charge of that, so.
Yeah, so again, when we, when we meet in our Trails Committee also, and this, people have many good ideas for it should be, so again, we want to engage the community.
I think the community should decide, not council.
All right.
Thank you.
I only have one quick question and suggestion, is when it comes to the playground, and we are going through the, like, priorities, let's go ahead and hear that sooner than later, when we had probably 30 emails today, so people on both sides can know it's going there or it's not going there. If it's not going there, we need to determine where it's going, because people have been working a pretty long time on this. So, that's all. So, just go ahead and just, in the future. All right, I'll call for a motion.
Yeah. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve a resolution to accept the plan for the park at the former Milton Country Club, Agenda Item Number 19-180.
Second. All right, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. We have a motion to approve a resolution to accept the plan for the park at the former Milton Country Club. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, moving on to our final new business item. Will City Clerk please sound the item?
Our final business item is council discussion of the City of Milton Public Building and Facilities Authority to include possible appointment of members and an upcoming bond issue, Agenda Item Number 19-181. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor Protem and council members, thank you very much. So, as you know, the City of Milton does in fact have a Public Building and Facilities Authority. These are actually fairly common, a lot of jurisdictions have them. They have various degrees of activity or involvement, and the main function they serve is to act as a conduit for the issuance of revenue bond debt. That's the main function that many authorities in Georgia serve, whether it's a Downtown Development Authority, or a Standard Development Authority, or a Public Facilities Authority, or in this case, a Public Building and Facilities Authority. I think the law creating this one was about in 2007 as well, and we're about to use it again. I believe there are some plans to possibly use a, a debt instrument, a revenue bond, for your public safety complex, or your public safety building. It has been a while since this entity has sort of had the dust moved off of it a bit, and so, we're going to try to talk about that this evening. So, if the council wants to talk about the Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority and wants to talk about the potential debt instrument, or what that looks like, and how much it's going to be, and when it may occur, those are more Stacy issues than, than me. But with respect to making sure that we have all our ducks in a row to move forward procedurally, I do have some things I'm going to ask of you this evening. A couple of things for you to know, first of all, the Milton Public Building and Facilities Authority does allow you to appoint yourself as your selected member. The Milton Public Building and Facilities Authority anticipates that the term of the individual that you appoint is co-terminous with your own term. So, Councilmember Jamison, let's just say hypothetically that you appointed yourself to be the District One Post One member on the Public Building and Facilities Authority, then your term runs co-terminous with your term on council. Same for all the other council members. Once you have asked all the questions you would have asked this evening about what this entity looks like, I am going to walk you through a series of six motions. The mayor's not here, so I'm not going to ask for the mayor to make his appointments tonight, to go ahead and have each of you pick your appointment for the Facilities Authority, and I will go ahead and tell you, I'm not looking for you to go out and survey the community. My expectation is, is that you will appoint yourself. So, if you're not ready for motions, or if you want me to go ahead and go right to the motion part, I'm happy to do that as well.
Y'all have any questions? All right, let's go ahead and move forward.
Let me just mechanically, what I'm going to be looking for, is I'm going to be looking for each member to make a motion. You need to make the appointment for your district, that's what the authority anticipates, and I'm going to ask it to be yourself. And I know you may think, that's weird, or that's a conflict. It's not. It's fine, you don't have to recuse from your own vote. So, here's what I'm going to look for. I'm going to start with Mayor Protem tonight, but Councilmember Jamison, and what I'm going to ask is this, here's the way I want the motion to go. I move to appoint and/or ratify Peyton Jamison to serve as the District One Post One appointee to the City of Milton Buildings and Public Buildings and Facilities Authority.
I should have got a cheat sheet, all right.
You could just say so moved, if you wanted to.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
All right. Councilmember Koontz, again, I don't want to get ahead of you, but my recommendation would be that you make a motion to appoint and/or ratify Matt Koontz to serve as the District Two Post Two appointee to the City of Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Bentley, I would respectfully request that you move, if it is your pleasure, to appoint and/or ratify Laura Bentley to serve as the District Two Post One appointee to the City of Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Cookerly, I would respectfully request, if your, your pleasure, to, that you move to appoint and/or ratify Carol Cookerly to serve as the District One Post Two appointee to the City of Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Longoria, if it is your pleasure, I would request that you move to appoint and/or ratify Joe Longoria to serve as the District Three Post One appointee to the City of Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Councilmember Morag, if it is your pleasure, I would respectfully request that you move to appoint and/or ratify Rick Morag to serve as the District Three Post One appointee to the City of Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Members of the council, thank you very much. We will swear you in, probably at a, at a different meeting or a work session when the mayor's back, we'll also have to have him go ahead and make his appointment, but this does help us, just one of the moving parts we have to do to make this issue occur. So, thank you, and.
I actually have a question, sorry if you, if you, it's okay. My question is, we would like to call a PBFA meeting on the next regular meeting night, which is September 9th, and this would be, it could be before, but we could also hold it after, the regular council meeting. Would it be better to hold it after the regular council meeting so that we can swear everybody in?
Yeah, because we can get them all sworn in then and walk through it, that's right. So, I think we can just go ahead and set it, I don't think they need to set it for us, we'll go ahead and set it, just do it afterwards.
Very good, thank you.
I think that's all we have on that issue. Thank you, councilmembers.
All right, thank you. All right, go to council reports, any council reports? All right. Staff reports?
Parag Agarwal.
First of all, I want to thank the city council members for your support for the adoption of the master plan for the former Milton Country Club. It has been a 16-months process, you all know that I came in the middle of this project, but again, City Manager Steve Kirkoff, Carter Lucas, Jim, have been working so hard on this, and again, it will be a great project, implementation will be much harder than the planning process, but again, just wanted to thank you for your support. Coming to the next plan, the Trail Master Plan, that the work on the city's Trail Master Plan is going very well, and there has been a lot of community interest. We have conducted two community meetings in the last couple of weeks. The first community meeting was for the Crab Apple area, and around 20 to 25 community members showed up. The second community meeting was for the Deerfield area last week, and we did not get very good attendance, around seven to eight community members showed up, but the people who showed up, they were quality folks, and they gave us a lot of input. This week, we will again be having one more community meeting on Thursday, and in that community meeting, we will be discussing the trail network inside the green space, the cities, the green spaces which the city has recently acquired. So, one of the priorities of the Trail Committee is how we can put more trails on the city green spaces. So, in that community meeting this week, we will be talking more about the planning of the trail spaces within the green space. The next open house, and the next time we will come in front of the city council, will be on September 16th, 2019, and we will give you the feedback, we will report you on the feedback which we have received from the, from these community meetings. Second update is this tree preservation ordinance. The draft of the revised tree preservation ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission last month on July 25th. As you know, the stakeholders group adopted this, they did approve the tree preservation ordinance in May, and after that, it went to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has provided some good recommendations to the staff, and I will say the recommendations which the Planning Commission provided us were a bit longer than what we expected, but still, we are working through those planning recommendations. We will again be presenting the revised, revised tree preservation ordinance to the Planning Commission later this month, in their August Planning Commission meeting. Once, apparently, since the changes are a bit, the revisions are a bit too much, so we are again, we are again planning to take it in front of the Stakeholders Committee, just to show them the revisions which the Planning Commission has recommended. Once the Stakeholders Group and the Planning Commission has reviewed this document, we will be presenting to the city council as part of your work session. BCA application process, we have, on the request of the BCA members, we have made a slight modification to the BCA application. There was a request of, from some BCA members that they cannot access the property, because many, many of these properties are too deep and they're not visible from the street. So, as part of the application process, we now take the consent from the property owners that if the BCA members so choose, they can contact the staff, and the applicants and the property owners can provide the access to the BCA commissioners so that they can make a more informed decision. We can also make this process adjustment to the Planning Commission and also to the city council members. If a rezoning application comes in front of you and you would like to have a site visit before you vote on it, you can, you can conduct a site visit after taking the permission of the property owner. The last update which I have is this Freemanville Estates, the address is 15655 Freemanville Estate. So, there was a lot of discussion about, from the community, about the helipad issue, whether this property is being used for a special event facility or something. So, we are working closely with the city attorney's office, and based, and again, thank you to Shannon, our communications director, for keeping the community informed about all the updates happening. So, I issued the letter to the property owner spelling out all the steps that needed to be done to get all the approvals. That letter went out on August 20, August 2nd of 2019, and we basically said, till August 13th, you have to contact the city and fill out the LDP application, land disturbance permit application for the parking pad. The parking pad over there is around 10,000 square foot, so you need to get a LDP permit for that, at least LDP review. They have contacted the city, and they are working with the staff on the LDP process. So, again, that, just wanted to give you an update, that process is moving forward, and we will make sure that this property is complying with all the city code regulations. That's it from me, any questions?
Questions?
I just have a comment. We got some great feedback from the Chair of our Green Space Committee tonight about the trails within Green Space, and I would just make that suggestion that we follow up with Mr. Whittle and, you know, continue that conversation about his thoughts on the, on the trails.
Sure, thank you, yeah. He also sits on our Trails Advisory Committee, and not only him, I think a couple of members of the Green Space Committee also sits on the Trails Advisory Committee, and their input is critical.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam?
Thank you, and good evening. Just wanted to give you a brief update on some of the things going on in HR right now. We've got a few major projects going. First, we're working on rewriting our current policies. We have a cross-apartmental committee, kind of folks from police, fire, and admin. We're looking basically page by page through our rules, updating them, trying to clean them up and look at new policies that aren't included in our current ones. We're about 25% through that project right now, and we hope to wrap that up in the next probably couple of months. We meet once a week on that. The second one is a pretty exciting project for us, we're looking at our performance management system. Now, we basically started with a blank state, with the concept of, what if you didn't know anything about performance management, where would you go with the system? And we really wanted to be able to make it so we could make employees more efficient or effective in their current positions, how we increase their performance or enhance their performance, and take a mediocre employee to make them a good or a great employee, and prepare our employees for the next position. So, we're building that from scratch, and we're looking at a couple of different options, and I'm excited what we're going to come up with on the backend of that, it'll be an interesting process to go through. And finally, one of the final projects we're working on, or one of the other projects we're working on rather, is our part-time pay program. Our current plan and grades and steps have incorporated all of our full-time employees, we're looking at moving all of our part-time employees into equivalency within that system so we know what we're paying our part-time employees when vacancies come up or new roles get established in those. That's all I have for the evening, and are there any questions I can answer?
Any questions for Sam? Thank you.
Great, thank y'all.
Okay, is there a motion, a second, to adjourn to executive session to discuss land acquisition?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1694.97]
Motion to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, come a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Done.
All right, can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, done.